Well, for the first time in a long time, the race for Rockwall Independent School District Board is contested. Despite the fact that there's three candidates, only two of them care to let you know what they think, and I have them here with me today. It's time for some straight talk. I'm Bunker Bob Steinhegen on a special edition of The Bunker Bob Show. That's right, we have the two candidates who actually care about making sure you are an informed voter. Those two candidates are Courtney Grober and Amy Hilton. Now, Mr. Pete Flores is also running, and what's interesting about Mr. Flores is that he's the treasurer of the Rockwall County Republican Party, and he is running hoping that his political activism will get him this spot. What's most disturbing is that Mr. Flores not only is not here, but he would not answer our calls, multiple calls. We attempted to get him via email. We tried to get him through his Facebook page and would not respond. I happen to be a Republican National Delegate for Donald Trump, and the fact that Mr. Flores, who's the treasurer of the Rockwall County Republican Party, won't even answer my calls raises a huge red flag. Now, as I've said before, one of the worst governors of Texas and presidents on the issue of education happened to be George W. Bush. He was awful on education, but he was a Republican. Don't forget the every child left behind legislation, thank you Ted Kennedy, that George W. Bush passed. As governor of Texas, he wanted to put a liberal as chairman of the State Board of Education, and I mean a liberal, and we defeated him on that. As I constantly say, a Republican does not a conservative make, and I encourage you to listen to the two candidates that are here because these are two people who have dedicated much of their time and attention to bringing excellent education to Rockwall schools. Now, because this is a nonpartisan race, I'm not highlighting the candidates' voting records, but I will say and can say that at least one of the candidates who is here with me is a lifelong Republican. Now, if that doesn't matter to you, then I hope and pray that you will take time to listen to what both of these candidates have to offer. If education is important to you, don't make this decision based upon someone being a political activist. So let me begin by introducing our two candidates. First is Dr. Courtney Grober, who earned a Bachelor of Arts degree from Morehouse College in Atlanta, Georgia, in history and sociology, not scientology, a Masters of Arts degree from the University of Michigan in Education, and his doctorate from the University of North Texas in Education Administration and Curriculum Instruction. Dr. Grober taught Social Studies for four years, a campus administrator for 15. Now, was that in Rockwall?
Five of those 15 were in Rockwall.
Okay, and then Dr. Grober also served as principal of Rockwall High School, and that was from 2013 through 2018, and is currently the Assistant Superintendent. Well, I do want to highlight one thing that's notable is that when the election was supposed to be back in May, you were commuting to San Antonio for a couple of years.
Yes.
Wow, but now you are the Assistant Superintendent in Plano.
Absolutely, yes.
Wow.
Since July.
Since July?
Yes.
Okay, well, I guess it's nice not to have to travel.
Well, it's just George Bush and I.
Well, some people consider that the same thing. And are you still the Chief Academic Officer for the Texas Council on International Studies?
I'm a consultant for them.
Okay, you're consulting with them. The other thing that's notable about Mr. Grober is his family. Courtney and his wife Devon have two children who are actively involved in RISD, FFA, Student Council, and Athletics. His son is pictured there, who is 16, his name is CJ, and Sidney, who is 18. And so is Sidney a graduate?
Sidney just graduated and is off to college at Grambling State University, playing on a soccer scholarship.
Is that right? Well, that's my daughter's game. That's a fun thing to...
It's fun, and I also feel your pain.
Yeah.
It's a lot of sitting out in the sun and the cold and everything else.
Oh, tell me about it. Now, where are you from originally?
I'm from Michigan.
Okay.
And I was born and raised in Michigan. I was born in the city of Detroit. I grew up in the suburbs of Detroit, in a town called Ypsilanti, Michigan.
Wow, and so how did you meet your wife?
My wife is my high school girlfriend.
Is that right?
And many respects, she still is my girlfriend. So we've been together since ninth grade, November 3rd, 1992.
Wow, and how many years have you been married now?
We are, we just finished our 19th year.
Man, you should not have hesitated on that one. You're going to get in trouble. I hate to do that to you, but...
Well, Bob, I gotta tell you, I always think about it first as my girlfriend. So you had me saying 1992, and I'm trying to do that math real fast. We've been married since 2001.
I get it. I understand. Well, that's great. Well, you are very well educated, and you've really seen education from the inside as both a teacher and administrator, so you kind of know the pain that a lot of faculty and staff are feeling.
Oh, absolutely. I'm feeling it right there with them in terms of the tumultuous changes we're all going through. I feel it as an educator, and I also feel that as a parent.
Very good. And on my right is Amy Hilton. Amy is a 14-year resident of Heath, a graduate of Texas A&amp;M University with a BBA in accounting, and by the way, that gives her a leg up over anybody, gig 'em, right? And has been licensed as a Certified Public Accountant over 20 years, and has been actively involved in RISD school leadership, serving two terms as the first president of Lynda Lyon Elementary PTO, as well as serving two terms as president of Rockwall Heath Early Childhood PTA, a past recipient of the President's Volunteer Service Award, and a graduate of Rockwall Independent School District Leadership Academy. Ms. Hilton is currently serving on the boards of RISD Council of PTAs, Rockwall Heath High School PTA, Lynda Lyon Elementary PTO, and National League of Junior Cotillians Rockwall Chapter, as well as serving on the Philanthropy Committee of Young Men's Service League. Doesn't sound like you get too much rest.
Occasionally.
Occasionally.
I got to catch up in quarantine a little bit.
Amy has also been mentoring young women in RISD secondary schools since 2013 through Wings Mentoring Program, and has served as both a Cub Scout leader and elementary robotics coach. The Hiltons are active members of First Baptist Church of Rockwall, where they have taught Children's Sunday School for the past nine years. Amy and her husband Robert have four children, all who attend RISD schools. Amy, it is great to have you here today. Well, tell me a little bit about how you and Robert met.
So my roommate at Texas A&amp;M was, you know, became a great friend of mine, and when she got married in the year, in November 2000, I was in her wedding, and she happened to be marrying this guy that had a great single older brother whose only flaw is an undergrad and law degree from University of Texas.
Oh, my goodness.
Other than that, you know, we're gonna let that go. But we met at their wedding. So, you know, so my college roommate's now my sister-in-law, and so we have a great time.
Well, and now that we're out of the Big 12, it makes life a lot easier, because I married a K-State Wildcat, same thing. So, yeah, life's a lot easier, isn't it?
Yeah, yeah, thanks to the Longhorn Network. I mean, it really just has worked out a lot of things at our house, and I get to kind of laugh while my brother-in-law in North Carolina struggles to find the Texas game on television.
I love it.
You know, it's all, everything's all good.
Well, thank you for being here. Amy, I'm going to start with you and ask you the very simple question. This goes to both of you. Why on earth are you running for school board?
Yeah, so, you know, I've got four kids, like you mentioned, that are in Rockwall ISD schools. They're in fourth, sixth, eighth, and ninth grade. So we've got elementary, middle school, and high school this year, which is our first year of having all three. So first of all, I'm doing it because of my vested interest in the district. I have, you know, a deeply personal reason why I want Rockwall schools to be successful, and that's the education of my own children as well as everybody else's. I, the timing was important to me. I was kind of waiting for this moment when I'd had kids at all three levels of the school so that I would be able to understand what people are experiencing at elementary, middle school, and high school. And so, you know, here I am in that place now. I will be in that same situation for the next three years, so the entire first term on school board. I would have kids spread out like that, and I have kids in the district for the next nine years. So I have a long, you know, period of time ahead of me where I continue to be a parent with this vested interest that I feel like is really the most important thing right now that we can, as a school board member that I can bring to the table, is represent, you know, invested representation.
Great, thank you. Dr. Grober?
Well, first, I decided to run even before COVID, because remember, the first election, you had to file before COVID. It was at least a popular thing. I'm running because I've been in education for 20 years. I moved to Rockwall because I love Rockwall schools. I have my kids in Rockwall schools. I'm very proud that they're both going to graduate from Rockwall schools. And there's some things in Rockwall that I feel we can be doing better. I think there's some things that we could be more innovative with. I think there's more support we can be giving our teachers. And if you want to know the truth, it was teachers that came to me and asked me to run. And so I thought about it and decided, you know, can I make it work? Because at the time, I was working in San Antonio. And so one of the reasons I left San Antonio and came back here to the Metroplex was to run for school board at Rockwall ISD.
What do you see as the school board's primary role and responsibility? Dr. Grober, I'm going to start this one with you.
Well, first, there's three things a school board member does. It's not something that you see or you don't see. It's just what you are. A school board member adopts a budget, they create policy, and they hire and fire superintendent. Now, that's the job of a school board member. The responsibility, I feel, of a school board member is of course those three things, but also to make sure that you're an ear to your constituents, to your taxpayers, to your students, teachers, staff, and lastly, to make sure you're carrying out the vision and mission of the school district.
Amy, what do you see as the school board's primary role and responsibility?
So the school board's primary role is one of oversight, and it's the job of the school administration and the people that work in school administration to interpret and implement the guidelines and the standards that are handed down from the state of Texas, from, you know, whether we TEA or the state. And the school board's role is to oversee that process, to make sure that in the process of doing that, that the administration is acting in a way that treats people in this district and the students and teachers and families. I mean, that everybody's represented fairly in that process, and that we're looking out for everybody. But it's, you know, like I said, it's definitely a job of oversight. The school board is not the one who is personally taking the actions to implement those things, but definitely need to be there to look out.
Very good. Well, as a school board member, who do you see as your primary constituent? And how do you intend to make sure that you are listening to their concerns? Amy, I'm going to start with you this time.
I see my primary constituent as the student, because I feel like if we're serving the students in the manner that I expect them to be served, which is with excellence, I feel like that we are effectively serving everybody in that process. If we are educating our children with a high degree of excellence, then we're delivering what their parents needed us to deliver. If we are educating our students with the care and the excellence that I believe we should, we're delivering value for the taxpayers' dollars in terms of what they are putting in, you know, the investment they're putting into this district. And if we are in the process of providing this excellent education for our students, we'd be serving our teachers, because you're not going to get an excellent education if you're not looking out for, looking out for the people who are actually doing the work at the school. So I feel like the students, my primary constituent, because I really believe if I'm serving them, that we're serving everybody.
Well, okay, let me drill down a little bit. And so let's say we have a conflict between faculty and students and parents. Which, who are you an advocate for in that situation?
I am, I'm always going to be an advocate for doing what's best for kids. That's my pri, that's why I'm here. I mean, that's what brings me to the table is my concern over kids and how we are educating kids. So my, that's where I'm going to come down on that as far as if it's what's best for kids, then that's what I believe the best choice is, unless there's just, you know, I mean, obviously in some specific circumstance, that's kind of bizarre, and we're not really talking about something specific right now.
Right.
I guess that could differ, but I feel like that that's where I stand.
So, let me define constituent. So how would you define constituent?
I define constituent as the people who are affected by you.
Okay.
So they're obviously, if I'm defining students as my constituent, clearly they're not voters, but they are the people who are affected the most by what happens in the district.
Okay, Dr. Grober, a primary constituent?
I represent the taxpayers.
Okay.
The taxpayers are hopefully voting for me, and if the taxpayers are voting for me, and they all feel a certain way that our teachers should be doing something, or our students should be performing a certain way, that's who I represent.
Gotcha. How often do you attend RISD school board meetings, and do you feel that the board does a good job of representing constituents? Going to start with you, Dr. Grober.
Well, I used to attend them all the time when I was working in Rockwall. When I left, I could only see them via video, and that's even before COVID.
But you were watching via video?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely. I still have kids in the district. Well, at least I still have one. And so absolutely, I was watching the school board meetings, and I still watch the school board meetings. I'm proud to say, though, I feel that our school board does a pretty good job of listening to the constituents. As for the last, what, seven or eight years, I've always seen them at places that you would expect to see them, at student events, at staff recognitions, at public venues, and just community gatherings. So I have always felt, always, and I still do, that our school board does a great job of being visible and listening to our constituents.
How many people do you, or what percent of the parents do you think attend school board meetings or watch online?
Oh, my gosh. I don't know if I could do a percentage, because it'd be under two.
Yeah, yeah. So it's typical of most government.
It really is.
People aren't watching until something goes wrong.
Exactly. And I do think, you know, while we're in COVID, there's been a huge increase of viewership, if you will, of the school board meetings, and that's good. That's very good. I would hope that more parents would tune into the school board meetings, and it's easy to do. You don't have to drive yourself up there. You just turn on your laptop and just, you know, zoom in, because they need to know more about the workings of the school. I think a lot of times, parents, and even just community members, you don't even have a kid at the school, and you're getting frustrated with something that the school is or is not doing, and it's because you're just not informed. Maybe they're doing something because that's what the law says they have to do, or maybe they're not doing something because the law prohibits them from doing it. And so an informed community would make for a more informed decisions about who's running your schools, and thus better schools.
Thank you. Well, how about you, Amy? Do you attend school board meetings?
I attend every school board meeting.
Do you?
I do, yeah. During quarantine, when the board meetings were online, I attended, you know, via Zoom or over the Zoom call, obviously, because we weren't able to attend in person. But yeah, I attend every meeting. I believe I missed one in August when my son needed me to be at a Boy Scouts meeting for a thing that he had going that night that I needed to be there for. But other than that, yeah, I attend every meeting. It's been very educational for me and important to me to be there. I actually, on my Facebook, my personal Facebook page, I post a summary after every meeting that just, you know, I take notes during it and just immediately afterwards post my summary of kind of everything that happened to help educate people, because that's something I guess I've noticed in this process, is that people don't fully understand what goes on in school board meetings, what the responsibility and the role the school board is, and what actions they're taking. So, yeah, I enjoy it and...
Yeah, and that's interesting. You know, such a small number of people attend these kinds of meetings, but you're already, I guess, not just in your role as PTA president, but just as a parent, you're really already representing and giving a voice to parents, it seems like.
Yeah, absolutely. That's been very important to me in this process, that as I, just as I kind of got more involved in the campaign process especially, but realizing that people really did not know what was going on. And then with everything that had happened with the pandemic, it became even more important that parents were kept abreast of exactly what was going on with the schools, as it was such a major part of what has, you know, been affecting people. But to answer your other question, though, as far as how I feel about the school board representing people, I think there's all, I think there's room for improvement there. I think there always is room for improvement. I know that I could do a good job.
Yeah.
Representing all constituents, as far as, you know, our family, you know, make clear our families and students are my primary, kind of what brings me to the table. But I definitely feel that there is, that I have a unique ability to represent teachers, taxpayers, families, you know, really everybody in the district.
Excellent.
The level of investment that I have.
Excellent, and you are very invested, no question about it.
Yeah.
Now, thank you. You know, in your view, what are the best attributes of Rockwall schools?
I think that people are the best attributes of Rockwall schools. I believe that the relationships and community aspect of the district that we have here is very important, and what has brought people, you know, people have a great love for this district. Now, at certain times, people are going to be upset about one thing or another, but at the core, though, it's really people and relationships that I think makes this district great. It's obvious that that's the case, because it's a destination district, not only for families, but for teachers as well. And whenever we have a good, you know, nice job opening, they get a lot of applications, and teachers fight tooth and nail to get a job in Rockwall ISD over another district. And it's a real privilege and honor for them to, you know, in their career. They want to be here. They're happy to be here. And I think we see that every day with the level of, the level of love and care that the teachers have for our students. We see how much they want to be here. So to me, I see people as the, really the greatest part of this district.
Okay. Dr. Grober, how about you?
Great, great question. I love this question, and I can tell you, I lived it firsthand when I was principal at the high school. It's our, it's our parents, it's our families. And it's an easy measure. You could go to any athletic event, any fine arts event, any robotics event, you will see our parents in those stands. They will drive out to Longview, they will drive down to South Texas, they will, they will take planes to Alaska. And so our parents are very, very supportive of not only their children, but of our schools. And they're very invested. They're very, despite not going to all these school board meetings, they care deeply about our schools, about the performance of our schools, and it's hands down, it's our parents.
Excellent. What do you see as the biggest challenges facing RISD? What do you think, Dr. Grober?
Well, Rockwall, and I think we know it, but we don't really think about it. Rockwall is considered a destination district, which means people are coming to Rockwall.
Yeah, they are, in droves.
And I don't mean Rockwall City, even though that's true, too. I'm talking about Rockwall ISD.
Right.
It encompasses many cities around us. And so as a destination district, we're growing. We're considered a fast-growing district. And so that is the challenge. How do you keep up with being a fast-growing district, but maintain some of the things that you know work well for your district, but have the flexibility to sort of grow and change with the times, while you have this changing demographic of taxpayers and constituents coming in that have different wants and needs? And so you're, it's a huge, huge growing problem. I shouldn't say a problem, because it's really a great thing.
It's a challenge.
It's definitely a challenge.
And let me put some perspective on it, because I looked at some numbers before this. Over the last five years, we average 400 new students every year. And to put that in perspective, the average class size in the state of Texas is 15. Rockwall is now at 16.2. So if we continue growing at this rate, and we have, we have needs for more buildings and things like that, that's a lot to keep up with.
Oh, it absolutely is. And let me say this. You, I know one of my respectful opponents here is talking about lowering taxes. Well, lowering taxes is great. Don't mistake it. By the way, our taxes, our school taxes, that is, are the lowest they've been in 20 years.
Yes, they have gone down.
The lowest they've been in 20 years, and they just went down again, I think in July or August.
They did, they did.
Now, I will say that's primarily due to the state, to House Bill 3.
Yes.
But, so we're at $1.35. A dollar, you're going to have a dollar. A dollar's the base, so you can't go under a dollar. So what is that 35 cents? That 35 cents is encompassing primarily growth. It's our bonds. It's our debt to bonds. With our bonds, bonds build buildings. And so...
And voters approved a bond election just, what was it, four years ago?
2016, yes.
16?
Yes, yes.
Four years ago.
And so those, and it's four years ago, you approved it, but we're still paying them off.
Yes.
So that's where that 35 cents comes from. And it could be 33, 34, I don't know, but it's, that extra is bonds, and the bonds are due to growth. So the idea of saying you're going to lower taxes, well, I don't know how you do that and still not maintain your buildings to grow. So they're the lowest they've been in 20 years. We're the lowest around. We're the lowest, all of our neighboring, we're the lowest around. And that's a blessing. That's going to keep me here in Rockwall for quite a long time, and it's going to continue to draw. It's a challenge that's cyclical. It has its own synergy. And so I just don't want people to get confused. It's a very popular, I would even say a sexy thing to say, let's lower taxes. Well, I don't know how you lower taxes when our taxes are the lowest they've been in 20 years, and the extra that's there is only due to building buildings, which we need.
So would you support then, if you were going to support a tax rate increase, would you support that going before voters?
I don't know if I could say we need a tax increase right now.
Okay.
I don't, I don't see a need. I mean, especially when we just lowered the taxes. I don't know if I would ever consider looking at a tax rate increase unless we find that our teachers and their salaries are not being competitive with those around us.
Well, right now, they're a little higher than Texas average. So is that, is that what you're, I guess, what is, what is, how do you measure?
I wouldn't measure it that way, by the way.
How would you?
Because Texas, you have rural areas. I mean,
Yeah.
I would measure it based on the Metroplex, because that's the life they're living.
DFW?
DFW, absolutely, yes. That's where they live. And so the cost of living is here in DFW, not in the valley. And so as long as we're staying competitive for a livable wage as an educator in DFW, I don't see a need to raise taxes.
Very good. Mrs. Hilton, biggest challenges?
Um, I believe the biggest long-term challenge facing RISD is the management of growth over time. I believe the biggest short-term challenge we have is related to the pandemic and getting us out of the situation that we're in right now with the, just the return to school and the difficulties that we're experiencing there, the challenges that we're experiencing there. So it changed, you know, back when I, back in January, my answer to this question would have just, hands down, just been managing growth. But now I have a whole new, you know, a whole new thing that we've really got to deal with in the short term before we get to the growth part.
Yeah, you know, it's interesting. I was looking at some statistics, and over the last five years, we are averaging each year 400 new students. And when you consider that the average class size for the state of Texas is 15, our Rockwall is already at 16.2. How do you see managing that growth?
I think that the most important thing is to be extremely proactive and forward-looking.
Okay, what do you mean by that?
And I think that it's not, I don't think it's good enough to be... And I think that it's not, I don't think it's good enough to be looking at what what's happening right now and how are we gonna deal with that next year? I think we have to be looking out ten to fifteen years at all times. And that's something that uh, you know, really has a lot of analysis involved and that's a strong um, part of my background, yeah, is is financial analysis as well as I've worked in a lot of mergers and acquisitions and new construction um, in the banking industry. And that's, that's something that I bring to the table specifically is making, looking ahead at how we're gonna manage manage growth and what we're gonna do to handle that. So um, I mean, we already know the solutions for managing growth in a school district is obviously building schools, but what's the timing for building schools? It it's, I don't like to be a day late and a dollar short and build a school after it's already a couple of hundred kids over capacity. And I hope that in the future, we're able to be more proactive than than what we've been.
So so when you think about growth, and obviously I think it's a good point about about having to accommodate the 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 number of students, if if there were a need for more schools, would you, as a as a member of the board, support uh, voters uh, being able to decide whether or not uh, on a bond issue or something? Would you put that issue, I guess, to voters is the question?
Uh, I would put a bond package to the voters if that was, if the bond, you know, had been presented to the board, yes. I as long as it includes the things that I believe it needs to include, yeah.
Very good, very good. And being a CPA helps a little bit too, to to understand what things cost and and how to manage that.
Yeah, absolutely. Um, my back my background has brought me a lot of experience um, with construction, just in addition, in addition to general financial. The construction has been a big part of my career because I worked a lot in mergers and acquisitions as well as new branch construction for a large Texas bank. So during a time period where we had a tremendous tremendous amount of growth. So um, yeah, so you know, things like building new facilities is something that I've dealt with a lot in my career, so.
Very good. You know, one of the principal duties of the school board is to evaluate the performance of the superintendent and hold him accountable. So, Mrs. Hilton, how will you go about doing that?
Yeah, well, the evaluation of the superintendent is something that, um, first of all, that's outlined in board policy. So I mean, there's a procedure in place for that. Um, that I would obviously have to follow. Um, I think just speaking theoretically, I would be wanting to evaluate whether or not I felt like he had met his um, his annual goals that it were you know, kind of prescribed for the year, which that's part of the superintendent's contract is to have annual performance goals. Um, so I would be evaluating that. I I would, I would want to evaluate how I thought he was responding to uh, feedback, criticism, you know, uh, implementing other people's ideas and and just kind of how he was, his adaptability. Um, there are some, some of the things I would definitely look at in evaluating the superintendent.
Very good, very good. Dr. Gober?
I can tell you it's gonna be different than what it is. Uh, right now, very little input uh, from the staff that works closest with him. Our our school board.
We're talking about Dr. Villarreal.
Dr. V- Villarreal?
Yes.
Exactly. Uh, and 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 any superintendent before him. Uh, to my knowledge, their their evaluation has never included input from those that were closest with that superintendent.
Uh, give me an example. What do you mean?
A superintendent has a cabinet consisting of, uh, most districts call them assistant superintendents. We call them chiefs. Uh, so this this cabinet of chiefs who have the most intricate knowledge as to whether or not you know, his his vision's being carried out, or if his vision's even appropriate. Um, they have the most knowledge about his day-to-day workings, his ability to motivate staff, his ability to recruit and retain the best talent in our district, his ability to keep our expectations high for student performance and teacher performance. They know it. And so, no, does that need to be the only part of his evaluation? Absolutely not, but it does need to be considered.
So you're talking about something like a three sixty evaluation?
At least.
Okay.
Let me say it that way, yeah. And so right now, uh, the measures, you know, they're they're pretty much, you know, um, um, you know, is the budget balanced? It's it's very uh, broad things that of course they would because that's the law. I mean, like you, you wouldn't. There's too many prohibitive things that would prevent uh, these horrible things from happening. And so all of our superintendents continue to get, you know, decent to great evaluations, thus raises uh, for things that really are standard, are the minimum expectation. And so uh, I think we need more input from those that know better.
Very good. Is there a specific issue or set of issues on which you would, uh, you would like to focus if you were elected?
I mean, yeah, I I we have to talk about COVID. We have to talk about safety. Um, and and we're gonna learn a lot from this. Uh, but prior to this, prior to to March, uh, I I would have answered a a different way. And I would say we need to look at being more innovative. We need to look at offering better choices and more choices to our parents and families. Uh, we need to examine what we're doing. I'll I'll give you an example. Uh, I think most people are under the impression that most of our kids go to college. That is true. About eighty-four percent of our kids go to college. However, only forty-two percent of the eighty-four, only forty-two percent of the eighty-four percent that went to college actually earn a degree and that's in six years or less. So we have an issue. We have an issue of our kid, and 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 I wish I could tell you all the reasons that they're not finishing. I can't believe that that data doesn't exist. At least I don't have it. Um, of course, financial, I'm sure is part of it. Part of it is family issues. But some of it is just uh, resiliency. And so what are we doing to help our kids become more resilient? What are we doing to help them uh, explore all the avenues to to funding a college education? And so uh, the this is, this is a, I don't wanna call it a dirty secret, but it certainly is not well-known. Forty-two percent of the eighty-four percent that go to college are only finishing. That's a fact. I also hope that we look at school choice differently, even internally within our school district. Right now, if I'm a, right now, all of our schools in Rockwall ISD are very cookie cutter. And 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 I know, as as a former employee, painstaking efforts go in to making sure that if Rockwall High has this, then Heath needs to have this. If Utley has this, then Williams needs to have this. If Kane has that, then William, and so this this notion of, you know, equity at all costs is is ridiculous. Why not have a school that specializes in uh, fine arts and another school that specializes in CTE? Do you know how much it costs to build some of these labs? Why do we have to replicate it three, four times? Why not just specialize a school and then open it up?
Are you talking about a science lab?
Uh, a black, a CTE, a career technology lab.
Oh, I see, okay.
Which by the way, is why most schools don't offer auto tech anymore because it's just too expensive.
Now, your son CJ, is is he the one that's in FFA?
CJ.
Hate to be sexist, but I'm just assuming he's the one, the FFA.
No, no, CJ, CJ is, by the way, he's Courtney Junior.
Okay.
Uh, and so, but he will go by CJ to the day he dies.
I I do have to tell you that it, that I was surprised when I saw your picture that you were a guy. So I had a friend who was Dana and everybody thought he was a woman all the time too.
My mom and dad were surprised when I was born and I came out a guy too, so, because they already had the name fixed.
That's hilarious.
But anyways, no, CJ is an FFA.
All right.
He's a welder, uh, a budding welder. He's been welding since uh, the the fifth grade.
Wow.
Here in Rockwall ISD. And so uh, very proud of him. And he just ran for FFA officer and 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 got a officer seat. So I'm proud of him.
You know, it it really speaks to the 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 thing that I was talking about, that the nature of 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 university and and things i- is changing. There's, there's a lot of people with degrees out there that are out of a job right now and they're they're very well-educated. But you have people with careers of of technical, like electricians, uh, welders. I mean, they're making very good money. Go down five forty-eight, you see neighbors, the guy who owns the big roofing company. I mean, he does pretty well. You know, you got doctors who are living in little bitty houses with 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 massive uh, debt. So uh, yeah, so so this is the kind of thing that you're trying to 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 push forward in 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 the in the school.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Don't mistake me though. I am not saying I don't want all of our kids to be college-ready. I think that's important. But the reality is, we're fighting very hard to make our kids college-ready. Eighty-four percent go, forty-two percent of the eighty-four finish.
That that is amazing statistic.
That's a statistic from the National Student Clearinghouse that is, you can find that. I don't know if you can find it online, but you could certainly ask your school district to give it to you.
Well, and and it goes to, you know, both Amy and I are Aggies. And what's interesting, I was on the political science board and uh, learned that that half of all of the incoming freshmen never graduated at Texas A&amp;M. So I mean, it 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 kind of speaks to your statistics.
So the 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 last thing I want to say about that is, uh, yes, I want all of our kids to be college-ready because I don't want uh, for high school to end and then they do decide to go college and not be ready. So so that and that has to be there. But I I I I I feel very strongly and passionately about let's focus more on creating critical thinkers. Problem solvers, innovators, making them more resilient.
Very good. Mrs. Hilton, what about you? Specific issues you'd focus on?
Um, yes, for sure. I think that if if I'm elected in November, the primary focus uh, right immediately for me is going to be focusing on getting us back to a normal place compared to uh, where we are right now because of the pandemic. I believe that we are in the business of educating kids and we need to do everything we can to make sure we're doing that with excellence. And we need to be serving students and families as well as um, as well as listening to and responding to our teachers and staff needs. And I think right now we have a lot of challenges and we're working through a lot of things, but um, I I don't see that being resolved certainly over in the next few weeks. So I I anticipate that after immediately.
Obviously, so we've been talking about COVID already. Uh, it's had a dramatic and ongoing impact on education. From your perspective, what have been both the downside and upside of this crisis to education? And what do you believe is the biggest long-term impact to Rockwall Schools? Amy?
Yeah, so um, unfortunately, I I think there's been a lot of downsides to education. Um, I think that we have kids that have lost a lot of uh, retention, a lot of skills that they previously had. I think that they've been missing out on a lot of learning so far this year because of circumstances, whether they're learning remote or if they're one of our high school students that had chosen person, but they're on the hybrid. I I don't think that they're really getting the of a well-rounded education right now. Um, I think that we, I'm very concerned about some mental health issues going on with our students. Um, and what the pandemic has done to kids as far as affecting affecting their mental well-being. Um, I'm concerned about the negative impact it's having on our teachers and the challenges that they are facing dealing with the return to school and um, everything that's being kind of put on them. Um, I it's it's very concerning because I think that we're, I I know for a fact, we're losing teachers. Uh, we lose teachers daily that get to a point where they don't feel that they're being able to perform the job that they set out to perform, that, you know, whatever the limitations are that are being placed on them or the expectations that are being placed on them are more than what they're able to deal with. In addition to dealing with their own personal, um, their families or however the pandemic might have affected them personally. And they're having to make, you know, make that hard choice to leave in, right here in the middle of the school year. And and that's extremely unfortunate. I'm very concerned about that. Um, so as far as upsides, um, I think that the the lesson that is going to be long-lasting and have an impactful and and ultimately be positive for people is the adaptability that everybody has had to learn through all of this. I know that kids are having to deal with um, adapting in ways that we would have never even expected a year ago. And I think it'll serve them well eventually. I think right now, sometimes it's, you know, hard to appreciate the value of things that are going wrong at the time. But I do think down the road, um, people will have, will benefit in some way from what they learned through this experience and and learned about their own personal resilience and ability to adapt. Um, as far as the impact on Rockwall ISD long-term, I I would like to think that the only impact long-term is that we know now that this can happen. And that we know now that, you know, this is something, this type of event is something that we have to be prepared for. So that maybe if it ever were to happen again in some way or some form or some other kind of crisis that that puts us in a in a situation like we found ourselves in in March, um, that just having the experience and prior knowledge of what that was like puts us in a much more well-positioned place to deal with it. And may, you know, hopefully in that process, it would be less, kind of less traumatic. But um, you know, I I can speak personally to the fact that in coming into this pandemic, I was meeting with Dr. V the week prior to spring break. And um, we, I asked him then, at that time, we had seen colleges start to go online. And I said to him, this was right, this was, this was like a full week before spring break, maybe February twenty-seventh, twenty-eighth, I don't know the exact date, but it was that week, the week before the week before spring break. And I I said to him then, um, because there had been a couple of announcements that day about colleges going online. And I said, do you, do you think we could go online? Do you think that's a possibility? And he looked at me like I was crazy. And and I was like, oh, I know. Like that, that, what? Like that can't happen. And he was like, that can't happen. And I, and we agreed, that can't happen. Then sure enough, you know, midway through spring break, I start kind of getting some calls and and ask, you know, kind of talking about, what do you, what do you think about this possibility? That we have to not come back from spring break? And I was still saying, yeah, that can't happen. And then sure enough, that happened.
It happened.
And um, so I can tell you that, you know, coming into this, there probably wasn't a school district in the country that that was prepared for this. So I certainly don't fault Rockwall for not knowing that we could have potentially ended up fully online for the remainder of last year. But um, it would have been very unusual if we had been anticipating that. But now we know.
Yeah.
That this is, this apparently is a thing now.
Yeah, yeah, great point. Yeah, I I it, there's no way they would cancel the final four. That was it for me. When they canceled the final four, I knew we had.
The real deal, yeah.
Yeah, it's real deal. That's a good way to put it. Dr. Gober, again, same question. From your perspective, what has been both the downside and upside of this crisis to education? And what do you believe is the biggest long-term impact on Rockwall Schools?
Great question, very timely and appropriate. Um, let's start with the negatives. It it is so challenging. It it is probably the thing that would frustrate me most as an educator, both teacher and administrator, and probably all of our teachers right now. The most frustrating thing is to take a kid who is at risk. And when I say at risk, I mean at risk of not being successful on grade level. And that can be because of living situation, uh, any kind of mental or or uh, emotional disability. Uh, something, some kind of way is making this child at risk of not learning on grade level. So we, and we have a bunch of those kids and not just Rockwall, all over the country. When when you work so hard as teachers to to either one, uh, get them to grade level or to keep them on grade level, uh, COVID, COVID did some damage there. Our kids were pretty much without learning for four or five months. A- and and that 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 gap, uh, we used to call it, well, we still do call it that, I'm sorry. Because the summer slide, that is, over the two, three months of some summer vacation for the kids, you know, there's a slide in terms of of their retention of what they've learned. And so that summer slide has just been magnified. And so and then you couple it with coming back to a very alternative environment that they'd never been exposed to before. And there's always this assumption in these uh, virtual environments that they're gonna have the support at home, you know, to do that, well, first to cut the computer on.
Right.
Uh, and then to do the work. And so remember, some of these kids are at risk for what? For family. And so if I'm at at risk because of family, uh, I probably am not gonna get that support. And so the 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 learning gaps that are going to come out of COVID are are gonna be significant.
Okay.
And so we took a big step back with with our most vulnerable learners. Um, there's other negatives, of course, you know, my daughter was a part of last year's senior class. You know, all the, all the things that, you know, and listen, we're adults and we get it, you know.
Yeah.
You know, it's not the end of the world. And then we tried to explain that, but you know what? That's her world right now. And and I didn't even get a chance to experience to tell somebody else, no, it wasn't the end of the world because I didn't, I didn't know anything else. And so, yeah, it was hard. I mean, it was hard as a parent and any parent that lived. And so, yeah, it was hard. I mean, it was hard as a parent, and any parent that lived through that last year with a senior, God bless you, because that that was hard. And our kids, they, they suffered and nobody had answers. Nobody had answers. So, um, you know, and and right now, right now, I just had a phone call on Monday uh, from some folks in our district that expressed their frustration that the band and the drill team are not allowed to go to away games. Uh, and so here, they can go to home games. But they can't go to away games. Of course, the football team can go to away games and the cheerleaders can go to away games. But why can't the band and the drill team go to the away games? If they asked me, I said, I, 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 I don't know. I like, I, I wasn't, I, I, I'm not privy to that. I'm, you know, I don't, I don't.
Is that happening in Plano School District? Okay, interesting.
It's, it's, so I did find out is that it, every um, school district belongs to a U I L conference.
I see.
And so the U I L conference that Rockwall belongs to, as a conference said, we're not sending our bands and drill teams to away games. Now, we have two people that are on that conference, so that I think is an eight-man conference. So, we have two people, both principals of each high school are voting members of that con, of the, of that U I L conference. And uh, I, I, I would strongly recommend that those two principals use their voting powers. You call a meeting and if nothing else, discuss this one more time. Uh, for lots of reasons. We already have one group of seniors that that feel just like they, they had a huge rite of passage taken away from them.
That's true.
Let's try to prevent that. And so there's so many things that we're doing, and I think we're doing a pretty good job of to keep people safe. Let's do it for the band and the drill team.
Okay, thank you both very much. That big issue, big issue. Um, you know, our ISD has instituted a hybrid model of learning where high school students with the last names A through K attend school in person, while those with last names L through Z attend remotely and then swap according to a posted schedule. There are also days when all students attend remotely. Do you think the hybrid model is here to stay? And if so, what modifications can be made to improve it? If not, will classroom learning go back to the way it was? Dr. Gober, how would you answer that?
I want to say, this is great. My kid loves it. I love it. And and by the way, I, I, I want to give a thumbs up. This is an example of being innovative. This was a good example of our school district, uh, being innovative and thinking outside the box to to come up with a a solution. Uh, to to have the the ratios you need in the classrooms and and to be safe and and social distance and all of that. So, th- this, I, I, I am for this plan. I, I like the plan. I think it's uh, very creative. I, I, um, I was a part of San Antonio School District when the, when the pandemic started. Um, in Plano, this, I was a part of two other districts in the planning of the return to school. Uh, they both, by the way, landed in a similar vein. This type of hybrid model, especially for the high schools, because there's just so many kids at the high school. And so, uh, uh, I, I'm glad Rockwall landed there too. And so it was, it's very, now I will say this, I'm disappointed. It took them a month longer. Our kids stayed out of school a month longer because we, we couldn't figure it out. Uh, but we got there and and I'm very appreciative and I love this model. Now, I would love for the model to stay and for this model to be an option. Uh, but again, I, 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 I can't put that all on this district or any district because there's, there's laws, there's T E A and attendance accountability that they had to adhere to. And the only reason we're able to do this model, the hybrid model, is because there has been some exemptions from the state because of COVID.
Okay, so you're saying that you don't think that this is going to be a long-term?
I don't think it's going to be a long-term unless there's some changes at the state. Which, let's go back to an earlier question, Bob, about the role, responsibility of a school board member. Here's a great example of a school board member, uh, using their uh, 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 authority to have a voice in Texas. Uh, go down to the, the state Capitol and and talk to legislators, talk to T E A. Volunteer yourself for some of those committees and and let's change some things. Let's, let's free up camp, uh, school districts to do what they need to do. Let the local, and and this is the part that frustrates me, let our local school districts be run locally.
Amen.
And so, you have to have, and and this is key, a very informed, a very articulate, a very experienced school board member that can do that kind of job. Because that, that, every school board member can't do that. Every school board member, I, I, I don't, I don't expect to be able to do that. But the ones that can, should.
Okay, very good. Mrs. Hilton, uh, do you think the hybrid model is here to stay? And if so, what modifications uh, would, uh, can be made to improve it? And if not, do you think that classroom learning uh, will or should go back to the way it was before?
I certainly hope that classroom learning goes back to the way it was before. Um, no, I do not think the hybrid is here to stay.
Not a fan.
Not a fan. Um, I do have a high school student, so we, we are personally experiencing the hybrid. Um, and I think the hybrid is a situation where I'm, I was, I was at the board meeting where that was presented to the board. And a, a board member said, do we even have a choice? The answer was no, not really. I mean, it was, it was presented in the terms that us, Rockwall High School specifically was going to be so far over a reasonable social distancing capacity that there was really no choice but to make, move to the hybrid. Um, but now that we've experienced it for, for five, six weeks, um, I think it's time to cut our losses and and pull our kids back in. And the recommendation I've made specifically was that we pull both alpha groups in on Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday. And for now, keep remote Wednesday because I do believe that our teachers and our remote students are experiencing that, that they're relying on that day. That day does have benefits for them. And I think if we could at least get everyone back in for, you know, we're also on a, in addition to the kind of complication of the hybrid, we're on a block schedule in high school. So, currently, that results in you only going to your, most of your classes one day a week. Um, you know, you go to one A day and one B day on a typical week. And then you have first period and eighth period where you would go on both of those days. So, I think that even just that improvement of coming back in for the additional two, two A and B days, um, would be tremendous. And I know for my, my son personally, that would alone make a big difference. And if we needed to keep me, to keep the remote Wednesday, uh, remote Wednesdays, just to be able to transition out of this, I, you know, I think that's reasonable. But um, my goal definitely is to get out of the hybrid as quickly as we possibly can. I had hoped that would be reconsidered at the nine weeks, that I've lost all hope that, you know, that's on the table for the second nine weeks. But I continue to be hopeful that we would see a change at the third nine weeks.
So, the mandates on social distancing come from the T E A?
Well, yes, and I mean mandate is really not even the word because it's a recommendation. That, um, there's nothing that said you have to maintain social distancing at school. That's not a thing. And some school districts have flat out said, we can't, we're not, that's it. Um, Rockwall went the approach of, we're gonna try. And I respect trying. I, I respect trying. Um, I think in the case of the hybrid, though, that the, the parents who chose, as I did, to send their kids back to in-person school, because when you were given the choice, your choice was remote or in-person. And in-person meant five days a week. In choosing that, you knew what you were signing up for. There was never anything guaranteed by Rockwall ISD that you were going to have socially distant classrooms. That was not something that they promised anyone. So, people who signed up for remote knew that you're sending your kid to school, whatever that means. If that means they're socially distant, okay. If it means that they're not, then, then okay, you have to accept that because you're sending them back. And um, so I, I don't believe that by and large, that the people who chose in-person learning for their high school students did that with the expectation that they were going to be six feet away from other kids in the hallway. And basically, the hybrid, the hybrid was a lot more about the common spaces than it was about the classrooms. Um, and 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 it's true, Rockwall High School is very, very crowded in a passing period. Um, when I was, when I did Leadership Academy, we, I was at Rockwall High School, you know, for a day and and I was in the hall during passing period. And I can assure you, it is crowded.
Which one? Heath or?
Rockwall is much more crowded. It's the, just the building, the way the building is. It just doesn't have the, the large pa, like, commi, kind of common or communities-type spaces that Heath has. So, really, Rockwall is a lot more crowded when it comes to, you know, in between classes. But um, I think if you had one-directional halls, you know, which we do, we have one-directional halls now, um, you, you would eliminate some of that. But, but I do, but like I said, it's hard to know. And I don't real, I'm not really in the business of Monday morning quarterbacking decisions. I feel, I don't really feel like that's right. I feel like you have to look at something and say, okay, well, this, this is not going well. What are we going to do to fix this? I don't really think it's about rehashing everything that went wrong in the decision-making process. Um, so when it comes to this, I think that it's, like I said, it's time to just cut our losses, evaluate why this is no longer necessary. Um, we're seeing kids that have between three and twelve students in their classrooms at the high school level. Whereas in elementary, my, my kids have between twenty-two and twenty-four kids in their classes. And so why is it okay, you know, for high school to only have a handful of kids? But elementary schools to be operating totally normal capa, completely normal capacity. I mean, twenty-two, I have a fourth grader with twenty-two in her class, that's, that's capacity. Anything over that would require a waiver. So, um, it doesn't, it just doesn't really make sense.
So, you're, you're, you're an advocate for opening our schools up?
I'm an op, I'm an advocate for, yes, revising the hybrid, you know, in order to pull our kids back in. I do believe it's important we continue to offer the remote option. So, I want to be clear there that I, I, I'm not willing to say everybody should have to go back. If they don't want to, if there's people who have a reason they need to stay remote or remote's working well for them for some reason, and then okay, you know, that's, it's, we're required by the state to offer both remote and in-person. It actually is really not a choice. So, um, um, but yes, pull those high schoolers back in that want to be there.
Wow, okay. Well, uh, you know, obviously, this is one of those questions where there's a clear difference between the two of you. So, uh, this next question deals with neighboring Garland Independent School District and which allows parents to choose which school their child attends. How would you feel about giving that right to our ISD parents? Mrs. Hilton, I'm gonna let you go first on this one.
Well, um, yeah, the Garland model is interesting with what they call choice of school. I think that, I mean, here in Rockwall, we do have intra-district transfer. So, you do have the ability to request a transfer to another school. I believe that we, um, we don't make it easy, though. And I do believe that it should be an easier process on our families that, that need or want to transfer their kids. Um, I think the Garland model, that the one, the primary difference I see in implementing something like that here kind of first and foremost, is that there's something else that Garland has that we don't have that I am a, a, a proponent of, which is magnet schools. You, you, I see, I kind of see where the Garland model works better because of the fact that they have magnet schools. I think we could be, uh, benefit tremendously from a magnet school or two here in Rockwall, like a STEM elementary um, or, you know, a fine arts elementary. I know I've seen my own, my own nieces and nephews be highly successful in a magnet school. Um, and I, uh, and I additionally, as a, as a robotics coach, I have, I have personally experienced the tremendous success that the Garland STEM magnet has in the robotics world. Um, it's amazing and shocking on all levels. And um, and it'll really, really put you to shame, you know. But um, so, so, yeah, they, they've really gotten a, a lot of interesting things going on there. But with that said, I think that, um, you, you're, you're giving the people who have a reason or a need for the magnet school, you're kind of automatically giving them that. Then you have that ability to deal with other people who are wanting transfers or wanting to be able to choose what school they go to. I'm open to it for sure, if that was something that ever came up. Um, and like I said, we already have a process, but I'm open to improving that process and making it a little easier if people have a need or want to attend a different school than what they're zoned to. Even under the Garland model, it's not as simple as it sounds. Um, I mean, they advertise that ninety-six percent of people get their first choice. Um, but the people who are zoned to the particular school ha, they have first dibs. So, you, if you are zoned to that school, you've got a spot there. Um, unless you intentionally give it up. So, you, just because other people request to be at that school, if there's not room for them, then they don't get to go there. So, it's, it's not as, it's not a free-for-all in Garland. The way that, I don't know, you know, if you, if you, how you were interpreting that, but. I would support it, yeah, as a general concept. And like I said, I think we need a little bit more foundation, though, to get to that point where it would be really useful.
Very good. Dr. Gober, school choice?
As I said before, I, I am highly in favor of that. Just so we're all clear on this, Garland didn't really give that right to their parents. It was court ordered about thirty years ago in a civil rights court, uh, case. Where the court, uh, uh, forced them to integrate their schools and and open up their schools for choice.
Interesting.
That, that's the, the history behind the Garland.
I had no idea.
Absolutely. It, it's, it's a, I wish I could tell you the court date, but I can't. Twenty, thirty years ago. So, uh, now, there's other school districts, I just came from one, San Antonio, that didn't have a court order but has open, uh, uh, a choice. You, any school in our district, come on, pick it. You have to pick it in the springtime. And and that's more than appropriate because you have to have planning and appropriate staffing allocated. Uh, so you choose your, your, your school, uh, in the spring, uh, before school lets out. Uh, the school district adjusts their staffing, uh, you come back and, and San Antonio and also in Garland, they'll bust you wherever you need to go.
And so what happens if there, i- i- if there's, everybody wants to go to the same school?
Then you have to, then.
Is it a lottery?
Now you're stuck with brick and mortar and you have to go to some kind of waiting list or lottery.
I see. Okay, very good. Well, uh, that's, that's very helpful. You know, delegates to the Rockwall County Republican Convention unanimously adopted a platform plank opposing gun-free zones, specifically the Federal Free School Zones Act of nineteen ninety, which prohibits law-abiding citizens from carrying guns in public school, on public school property. This platform position is expected to be adopted by delegates of the Texas Republican Party and is now part of the Republican National Platform. If Republicans are successful in repealing the act, would you support the Second Amendment rights of law-abiding citizens to lawfully carry a firearm on public school property? Why or why not? Dr. Gober?
Uh, first, I, I'm all for the Second Amendment rights. I own guns, love guns, been guns all my life. And and and, you know, shame on, or I, I would rather say, dare the person try to take my guns away from me. However, uh, law-abiding citizens carrying their guns onto school is great until they are not law-abiding citizens anymore. And I don't know, I, I'm a school teacher. I don't know if today's the day you're not going to be a law-abiding citizen. And I, 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 as a former campus principal, there are so many things I'm worried about. Uh, there are so many doors I'm trying to keep track of. There's, there's, um, uh, and I say doors because you, 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 you're trying to control who's coming in and out of your building. Um, and so, the idea of also having to keep track of not only who's in my building, but also who's in my building with a firearm and is this a good day for them or not? Or, uh, the conversation.
How would you know? I mean, why, why would you need to know that? If, if, and and let me add to the, the question, let's say, can see, oh, well, there, it's not concealed carry, it's concealed or open. But if, uh, if, if school had some kind of restriction on, that they would have to be concealed, would, then, I mean, is there any allowance that you can see that, that you would support, uh, would support the, the lawful carry of firearms on school property?
I can see, um, allowances for outside of the school day. During the school day, that when learning is occurring, I just don't know why that would be necessary. Uh, we have and have always been very happy with all the S, the, the school liaison officers, those, the police officers that we have in our building. Uh, which, by the way, Officer Tracy Gaines was one of my SROs and he passed away to COVID a few months ago. And so, uh, people like him, uh, I've always felt very comfortable knowing that, you know, they have us in a, they're, they're keeping us safe. They're, they're looking out for things that I can't always look after, after and, and, and shouldn't have to look after all the little things that they do. Um, after-school events, big, big gatherings, football games even. I, I, I can see, I can see a case. I can see an argument. Uh, but during the learning school day, Bob, I'm going to tell you, it might not be a popular opinion, but I'm going to tell you, I just don't see. I just don't see why it's necessary. I, I, I don't see the value. Remember, my lens as an educator during the school day is learning. So my filter is, what are we doing to better ourselves as learners? I don't know what reason you picking up your kid during the school day and walking the 30 steps up the porch and back, why you'd absolutely have to have your firearm on you. Now, if it's true, and I don't know if this is true or not.
There's some of us who carry our firearm all the time. So.
What you have in your vehicle is none of my business. And it's been that way for me and probably going to continue to be that. Now, what the kid has in his vehicle is my business.
Right, right, yeah.
And so that's, has always been my filter in terms of firearms on campuses. But I am sure there have been many, and continue to be many, of families, parents, adults going through carpool lanes with their weapon on them or in that vehicle. And nobody would know the difference, and it didn't interfere with learning. So I have no problem with that.
All right, Amy, how would you answer that? You think law-abiding citizens should be able to lawfully carry a firearm on public school property?
Yeah, well, protecting kids is our most critical job. And I don't think that disarming law-abiding citizens is the way to achieve that. So I definitely support enhanced security measures in schools, including expanding on the Texas Commission on Law Enforcement's School Marshall Program, which would work similarly to the Sky Marshall Program and what that did for aviation. I support a program like that that would bring additional security into our schools, you know, by way of law-abiding employees of that school that are licensed to carry a handgun. And I definitely would support expanding on something like that in order to enhance security in schools.
RISD posts nine outcomes that they hold as a goal for every graduate. If you were forced to choose just one, and only one, and I realize this is an unfair question, one of those outcomes from the list that best reflects your hope that every student might take away, which would it be and why? Mrs. Hilton, I'm going to start with you.
Um, I would choose, of the posted outcomes, I would, I would choose the first one, which is to be college or career ready. I think that, you know, we're in the business of providing an education to kids so that they are able to, to go wherever their life is, is going to take them. And I think that whether it be that they intend and have the desire to go to college or whether it be that they want to enter straight into their career, I think that that's our, you know, fundamental goal needs to be, to make sure that we've provided them that, to give them that stepping stone that they need to be successful in their, in their life going forward. So, yeah, it's hard to choose just one.
Yeah, it is. I realize. It's unfair.
But if I had to pick just one, I want to make sure that we're giving kids the future that they hope for and giving them the ability to choose that.
Very good. Dr. Gober, what would you say?
For our students to think critically and ethically, and, and I'm going to add a word to it, be innovative and problem-solve independently.
Okay.
That, as I said, in, in the case of my own son, in the case of many, many children that I've been very blessed to have worked with over the years, it is what's going to make you successful. For you to be able to, when you're down on your knuckles, for you to figure out how to get out of it, that's what's going to make you successful. And I'm not talking about success as measured by your income or measured by any other popular mean. I'm saying successful as a human being, as successful as, as a man or a woman to know that you're able to overcome. And so whatever your, your income is that, that, that you have earned, and you feel good and proud of what you've earned, that to me is your own measure of success. And I'm fine and support that. But, but it pains me when I see time and time again, not only kids, but adults that get, fall on their knuckles and they don't know what to do. And so what ends up happening is you and me, and I'm not criticizing, I'm just saying, we end up taking care of them.
That's right.
And so if they had more of the means and wherewithal to sort of problem-solve, be independent thinkers, critically think, be innovative, have that grit, it would make every, not just them, but our whole society a better place. And so that, that's what I would advocate for. That's what I'd push for.
Very good. Well, that concludes the questions. But I want to give each of the candidates an opportunity to talk specifically right to you, the voter. And we started with, with Mrs. Hilton. I'm going to start the, the closing comments with you, Ms. Dr. Gober. And so talk right to that camera right there.
Well, first, Bob, let me thank you for having this venue. This is a great opportunity. It's the only and first opportunity that I've heard of for a Rockwall ISD school board election, primarily because most of our Rockwall ISD elections have been unopposed for at least a decade. And so it's, it's great to have this forum, and I appreciate you, and I appreciate Ms. Hilton for, for being here as well. Let me say this first. I, I feel good. I feel good about all of us going to vote because I truly do believe, at least with, with, with Ms. Hilton here, that you don't have a bad choice. And I'm going to say that, you don't have a bad choice. And I'm talking about Ms. Hilton and myself. I truly believe the hearts, intentions are in the right place. We're not getting paid. This is volunteer work, if you really want to know the truth. And so those intentions, I strongly believe she carries. And so I wish her well, and I appreciate her being a great opponent here. Now, with all that said, I want to say this, though. There's going to be two more, possibly, I don't know for a fact, but possibly two more seats opened on our school board in 2021. And if I don't win, you're going to see me again in 2021. I hope if Ms. Hilton doesn't win, that we would see her too, because I would love to work with her. I think she has some great ideas. I think she's a dedicated parent and has a great platform that, that would be beneficial to our school district. So why am I running? I'm running because I have experience. I run because I have the knowledge. I'm running because I, I don't need to sit on a school board, which, by the way, most new school board members take about two years before they even understand all the acronyms that are being thrown at them. I know those acronyms. I, I know our tax structure. I know our curriculum. I know the state mandates legislature. I, I understand, I truly do understand the inner and outer workings of our school district. And my only intention is to improve, to better the great things that we already have here in Rockwall ISD. I don't want to broad-brush, change anything, even if I want to, I couldn't because our system's set up where one man can't come in and do that. And that's a beautiful thing. But I do want to sort of push the envelope on being more innovative. I want to push the envelope on helping our kids develop the skills that I think, and I think many of us think, would help them be more successful as adults. I do want to, to, to challenge our teachers and our school administrators to allow for more options. If we can't get them from the state, we can allow more options in, in our school campuses. Which, by the way, when I was principal at Rockwall High School, we allowed arena scheduling so the kids can pick their own period of when they want to take math. And we took that same model and we joined Heath High School. And so at both high schools, those kids, every springtime, just like a college kid would, they pick their schedule, they pick their teacher, because I was trying to find more ways to give them choice. When people have choice, they're more invested into what they're doing. And so you have a choice right now of who you're going to vote for. I'm excited. I'm proud. I'm relieved to feel you don't have a bad choice with two people, Amy Hilton and Courtney Gober. And I hope I'm that choice and I won't disappoint you. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much, Dr. Gober. Mrs. Hilton, here's your chance to talk to voters.
Um, as a parent of four Rockwall ISD students, I am heavily and personally invested in the future of our district. And it's my desire that we are setting our kids up for success, that we are going to deliver excellence to them through their education. It's my goal to represent not just our students, but parents, teachers, staff, and all the taxpayers here in Rockwall ISD by delivering excellence in this district. And I feel that as a CPA, I have the financial background in order to bring the expertise needed to financial matters that come before the board. But as a parent in the district, I feel like I bring the kind of representation that's needed on the board. So I would like to ask for your support and your vote on November 3rd, and I appreciate it very much.
Excellent. Well, I just want to say to both of you, thank you for participating. Obviously, you care about what voters think and, and you want to use issues to persuade voters. I think that is a very good thing, and I hope that this has been informative for you. The whole purpose of this is to ensure that you are an informed voter and not just a voter who, who basically makes your decision off of a few slogans. I want to thank both Mrs. Hilton and Dr. Gober for their time and attention today and for being willing to, to answer these questions. Don't forget that early voting starts Tuesday, and your vote really matters. So please get out and vote and exercise your freedom, your liberty, your right as a citizen of this great nation. I'm Bunker Bob Steinhegen. Thank you for being with me today, and we will see you next time.